You're saying things like this, you know, get the screens in. Are you having a bad?
And then we put out so often.
Wonderful.
Five, nine, he had no style. There's no style. I was thinking the same thing.
He said, please.
Yeah.
No, it was.
Yeah.
That was so far.
Oh.
That's true.
I already told them it's here.
We say it like we see it.
Okay.
Well, I did.
As soon as.
It's very good.
I have.
Flat.
I know.
I have to walk down.
I thought that you were like.
I'm.
And.
Probably the day.
You got it, man.
Yeah.
Six point thirty.
Wait.
Now.
It's.
Book with your air blows.
What did the whole set of people say?
I understand.
When you.
When you.
You're listening.
Huh.
I'm getting very flexible.
Michael said, earn education.
A couple of years.
Who's smart?
That's what it is.
Isn't the same.
I like it.
Why not?
You're right.
You want to.
No.
You have to have a meeting.
I need.
Look for me.
I already.
Come on, come on, come on, come on.
If he's gonna tell us anything.
Take up my seat next day if I'm standing here.
All right.
Don't say that.
We talked about.
Take my notes.
This time.
You know.
I think so. I don't understand. We don't forget to check this. Time to vote. What else? So you want. I didn't. I didn't. Get these checks about. Jazz is something.
No. Don't.
Well, fuck. I just got it.
Dave, you have a moment. Shall we? Can I? Six o'clock meeting. I can hear all the members for this.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Jeffrey Treu.
Here.
Supervisor Romano.
Here.
Supervisor Latini.
Here.
Supervisor Ford.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara.
Here.
Supervisor Cromwater.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partey.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Natro.
Here.
Supervisor Enzil.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
Give him four, Mr. Chairman.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic of those who stand. One nation, one empire, the individual, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have three public hearings tonight. I have a motion open. Open here is a three day.
Over.
Right.
Any discussion? All over the table.
Aye.
Over. All right. Public hearing down low.
Please, both go ahead.
Start it.
Second. Any discussion? All over the table and close the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Here it is. We have one presentation. Boyle, President of the Friends of Three Bears.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We have the Friends of Three Bears. I want to thank the board supervisors for your continued support. Our vision and more importantly, our mission through your financial support and just your presence there every year and throughout the year when you come to visit. Being on site throughout the accessibility renovation that we just undertook, I feel that I'm very thankful to you, but also that we all were very fortunate to have MASA be awarded this project. Their team as well as any subcontractors that they had, they really did pay attention to detail and they all seemed very interested in the history of this building and they seem to be knowledgeable about historical building renovations. I'd also like to thank Bob Stuck, who really kept this project going. And more importantly, Bob, thanks for answering any question I had, no matter how little or how silly it might have been. I learned a lot and he explained it to me in terms that I could then turn around and explain it to my board trustees. So thank you very much for that. Also kudos to the county maintenance crew. Those guys did anything that we asked them to do as far as what we need, all this furniture throughout the building moved out as well as completed all that hand and they did it without the elevator. They used the chair. So who knows? To those guys, they were very upbeat and very, very helpful. Even though the building was closed for many months, we were able to carry out most of our planned programs because of our volunteers. Candidate being we did not plan as many programs as we did prior because we knew we could not use this facility. Our board trustees stepped up to cover the tourism information site hours and with technology visitors were able to take a 3D tour of this building. And you can do the same thing if you visit our website and you just scroll and you can go through the rooms here. The fact sheet that you have at your table gives you an idea of the number of people who visited the site, the number of programs that we provided and the volunteer hours that we needed to make this happen. So again, thank you very, very much for your continued support. We appreciate it and it's always great to see you.
Thank you very much. Next up is opening floor. We're done before anybody would like to talk from the public and speak on anything. Now would be the time. Okay. Thank you. We got a motion to approve the minutes from October 11th and October 24th. First and second, any discussion? All over the table.
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Here it is. Reports of special committees. Anything anybody'd like to say?
I don't know. Talk to them.
Hey. I was supposed to just add, the representative is not proper extension. Just to let you know, I know you've talked about having a future place or finding a future place for their own, their base of operations. Is Abe here?
Yep. Abe. I signed lease today. So we'll be moving into part of the old tail ground hospital in Warren for his living center, it's a table waiting that they're currently using for part of the records department that they were willing to move those people out. And we hopefully in over January is when the lease kicks in, so we'll be moving in January and hopefully getting everything out. So big step on cold steel desks. In addition to that, Barbara will be switching anybody that has a better school tags is over in the town office first of the year. So I imagine that's similar circumstances to, you know, people being moved around for leases and everything, which Barbara will be good because we have to pay your tax, how you pay your school tags in the same location.
Yeah. Okay. Chairman's remarks. I just, it's great to be down here in Oakland. It's great to see the elevator project completed. I know there's still a little more things here to do, but it's great to see a forward motion on this and something completed down there. It's great to see supervisor Reynolds go up the elevator for the first day. So I got county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take it on behalf of the entire board, Lynn, thank you to the Friends of Three Bears for all the work we've done down here. This has been phenomenal. I can't tell you how refreshing it is to embrace a group of folks that have given so much time and effort. And Phyllis Matil, thank you for all the work you've done as well. This truly is a labor of love. We all give it a lot to this, which surely is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. County attorney remarks. Do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Communications.
Communications 101 through 191 at the O C and the I.
Okay. First up, in the first ten, supervisor Reynolds, what do you need?
Thank you, Chairman. Board of Supervisors adopts the 2024 tentative funding budget for.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, so I think, at the last meeting, I don't think it was just me, but we have requested information about if we kept the tax rate the same, what impact that would have. Obviously would create additional revenue and I think, I don't know if Bob had run it up. I don't think we got it.
So I'm prepared tonight that I had basic cash flow, run us the new tentative at the same rate, which is a 3.79% tentative budget levy. And it would also require the override of the tax cap because it would certainly be over that.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The levy would be 12,600,000. And the increase is 1,530,000 over the tentative budget levy of 11,70,000.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just say that I think we should keep it at 3.79, exceed the tax cap and take that 1.5 million and put it in reserves. I don't see, it's nothing about, I'm not, I'm not in any way criticizing the appropriations of the budget in any way. I just think that to continually reduce the tax, property tax rate, knowing that sales tax is leveling off, potentially even stagnating, we're gonna, you know, four or five years, 10 years from now, Mike, I'm very concerned that we're gonna end up depleting our reserves and not giving the money available and having to do a significant property tax increase as opposed to, you know, just, just keeping it flat for a while.
No, it's not a, it's not a wrong idea. It makes perfectly good sense. But I don't know if this is the night to do that or whether we're budget workshop or making people to move off that type of thing. You gotta do it. It's unpopular when you over exceed the cash cap rate. It's unpopular, but that's okay. We don't have to drink before. I don't think people expect their taxes to go down.
Should we make a question?
Nothing I was gonna say is I attended a NICE act conference in the fall and one someone who works with the county was spoke and the one quote I wrote down was across the state, a lot of counties are having raised taxes 30 or 50% because they kept the flat, but reduced them for the past ten years. I'm afraid we're gonna raise that one. Ready for 30%. And it does worry me that we don't have much money. We're only looking at my redos and that there's 500, 500, 500 in that building reserve. It's not good.
Wait a moment.
Oh, I'm wondering if you could explain the ramifications of going over the tax.
Well, there's the one ramification that can happen is there's a program called Raise the Age that is through the Department of Social Services that if we end up having a Raise the Age juvenile end up in detention, the state will not cover any of those costs, which if we were below the tax cap, they would. When I asked Commissioner Van Black the potential hypothetical yearly cost of one kid in detention for the full year, it would cost approximately $300,000. But that gets purely hypothetical.
We are raising taxes though, but we're just not raising the tax paper, right? I mean, that's overtaking from the other circuit.
Correct.
So we're trying to lessen blow, but we're still adding. Wait, where are we taking 7 million, 7 and a half million to account? I mean, AC is going way up, way down. And we could probably catch up within five years by raising a little more. We're just trying to stay tax cap compliant, we're adding millions and millions and millions to protect the base, right? I mean, isn't that what's happening? I don't have a cheat sheet. Remember you were last.
It was seven.
Yeah. And that's what they, no. So it is.
I have the cheat sheets for the tax reduction reserve that I may have shared with you when we were talking before. I've updated them. If you would like copies of those.
I understand what Jeff is saying. Like we don't, but like we're staying tax cap compliant, we're still adding something. We should, I think maybe make the attempt to try, but keep you in mind exactly what you're saying right now. It's gonna have to come back up, try and stay tax cap compliant. I don't think we're in trouble yet, but if we kept doing exactly what you're saying, it would be a deep, deep trouble.
Well, to my point, Dave, is, is it too late to do the tax cap?
It's not too late. It complicates things. It puts you under a little bit of a gun. I mean, we have a draft proposal to do so. It could, if it goes, if it's brought up under Rule 29 this evening, it could be on the agenda. It would order a public hearing to be held at the, essentially we have to have a special meeting the night of the committee meetings and an S P, then that would bring back and we would schedule a public hearing at that time as well.
I mean, Jeff, what you're saying is simply correct. I mean, the multiple years of this will resolve in disaster, but maybe we just do this.
That's fair. I mean, Mike makes a good point. It's like, I mean, to be fair, I haven't raised this.
Well, hey, I have you the financial guru for the county. And I know you help out to rent into the budget, okay? From a financial standpoint, are you tapping it if we're okay moving forward or we should be looking to do some things differently moving forward as far as budgeting, as far as financial budget?
Well, in essence, what we've done in the prior four years, we've not fully utilized the tax reduction reserve that was allocated for each of those years. We actually reduce some fund balance and some of the other funds instead. So what we do have is we do have approximately 3.7 million of prior years tax reduction reserve allocation just sitting in there, tax reduction reserve, as well as we have prior, another 4.4 million sitting there from years prior to 2013 and interest, which we've talked about wanting to amend our fund balance policy. And I think that is the time when we go to amend our fund balance policy of what we choose to do with, on the allocations that were spent in prior years, whether that goes towards helping to fund your CIP plan or some of the other ideas that you would like us to.
At the county, are we restricted at the county level to have that tax refund a certain percentage of our overall budget, like at the county level?
That's only based on our fund balance policy, which you set by, by your proceedings.
It's not about the readers. Say fund balance policy has not been addressed by the board, I think it's over 10 years, 15 years.
Close to.
It's over two.
It's over two.
And there've been significant, obviously there's specific changes in your revenue stream over the last 10 to 15 years, which would, plus we did discuss that with the sales tax hearing process kicking in next year, a serious review of the fund balance policy needs to be addressed.
Great.
Again, not just to account for that, but there are multiple other factors that have changed over time.
Well, the best story is people who are gonna be here next year. So it's something anybody can keep in mind as we get preparing for the, for the budget, you know? It's time to make that decision.
So can I just add on what Mike said, a task? So stick with it, if you stick with it as it is before this.
Right.
And the tax rate moves down, but next year we tackle the fund balance policy and maybe kind of project over a multi-year type perspective. Is that, you would be okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good night.
Any more discussion?
I just want to put it on there that we talked all year about capital improvements. We talked about ARPA money. We spent, the ARPA money's not gonna last forever. We keep throwing the ARPA money around like we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. And we just talked about the Lillard thing. It's not gonna last forever and we have all. It's not gonna last forever, and we have all these projects and new works, our fund bank or our reserve funds for some agencies are vocal underfunded. And I think we really need this year to be very diligent on how we approve positions, fill positions, and it doesn't mean, you know, I still think we, if we don't, if we go with it the budget as is, I still think we have to be physically responsible in this role for the year to roll that line over at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I think we gotta work on it all here in order to get it done, you know what I mean? This is a big offer, you know, if you give them all by the time, we're gonna give them all by.
Any more discussion?
Good, this might be... No, we could eliminate a lot of positions, though, in this budget. I think we're working in the right direction, we could ask, if you'd like, make sense. We're gonna tighten our belts as we go forward.
Well, we eliminated a lot of positions, but there were positions that haven't been filled in in years.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number fourteen.
What's the number of authorized numbers to a $2,023,741? Take that, so, uh, I'm not just kidding, sorry. Support.
Chairman, is this number fifteen?
Fourteen.
Forty. Yeah, you have, uh, oh, I was gonna, it's, um, eight's had, four, seven, eight, two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred, no, number two, and we had forty-three thousand seven forty-one, so no number three here. That's enough.
Do you get a second on the amendment? I have a second. Need a second on the amendments? All those in favor on the amendments?
Aye.
Both? Here. All right, I want the original one.
As amended.
As amended. Thanks, Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number fifteen, two, right?
A resolution to adopt local county law eight of 2023, a local law adopting real property tax exemption for all four veterans pursuant to real property tax law four five eight dash two.
Support. Second. Any discussion?
Yes, as the, as the, essentially, all that note, I, this is a lot of work to handle this thing.
This is only for the, this is at the county level, this, you'll be up to your towns to adopt it independently, this only affects county at this time.
Okay, thank you. I got, thanks, both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. All right. Number sixteen, two, right now.
Okay. Um, I got that, so, um, let's read it first. A resolution to adopt Senate County Local Law number nine of 2023, authorize and allocate surplus sales tax revenue in excess of budgetary revenue investments to the towns and villages of Senate County.
Or? Second?
All right. Okay, now, I got an amendment, I'd like to, um, motion to amend the court calls, local law number nine of 2023, on number fifteen. I move to make the following amendments to the proposed local law as follows. Page four, line number thirteen, substitute revenue for review by estimated sales case.
Support.
On number five, page four, I...
See, you got a little bit...
Yeah, we gotta do more. Page four, line, uh, nine forty-six, and this, this report shall contain a, um, I slipped, okay? A list, this shall contain a list of any county, county, any ability or town or service of any type. For, um, page five, line two, and excess proportion of the plan to substitution, any responsibility shall be withheld by the county until such time as appears or account payable is cleared.
Support.
I'm good.
Support on the amendment, a second? Yes.
We have a second, I would like...
Yes. Discussion on the amendments. All those in favor on the amendments?
Aye.
Both? Here, all right, I want the original one, as amended. So a little more, say, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
I think if we were changing the local law, and county attorney can correct it from on, but I would like to move to amend, waiting, resolution number sixteen, by the trial and substitute as not, if you have any as a governor, that's open up.
Yeah, I was getting several of them. Essentially, because you had, already had a public hearing on this law, and then you subsequently amended it, you have to put it back out for another public hearing. So that's the, that's why the resolution would be amended by substitution.
So this is the resolution, you're reading the local law, line twenty-three, second one.
Second, yeah, second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here.
We're in the public hearing.
We will do the public hearing on the twenty-eighth.
And then we're gonna vote on the...
Yeah, and then if we do a special meeting, if there is a special meeting held, then we could be voted on if there are no further amendments.
Thank you. Yeah, but this one's... Number seventeen, that's two, right, four.
Page twelve, outside of...
That's you.
Hi, it's you.
Uh, county managers are authorized to contract and sign contracts with the State Department of Health and Children and use the Special Health Care Agreement administration land.
Or? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number eighteen, two, right?
Mental health is up to use 2024 minutes for contract services.
Or? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number nineteen, two, right?
Authorization to pass you $100,000 in near state office of mental health state aid via the United County Medical Service Organization.
Or? Support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty, two, right?
Supervisors approve 2024 mental health services, allowing using Z康X.
Or? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty-one, supervisor Sam.
Supervisor of the Board of Engineering for LEC Global Player.
Or? A second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Twenty-two, supervisor Jeff.
Board of Supervisors approve reclassification of mental health clinical therapists to psychiatric social worker in the mental health department.
Or? Should I get it? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty-three, supervisor Jeff.
Board of Supervisors approve the creation and filling of one part-time teacher at the county office.
Or? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Supervisor Jeff.
Supervisors approve the creation and filling of three full-time mental health clinical therapist position in the mental health department.
Or? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Twenty-five.
Supervisors approve the creation and filling of one full-time case manager in the mental health department.
Or? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty-six, supervisor Jeff.
Supervisors approve the mental health department to hire children services director immediately.
Or? A second? Any discussion?
What is that, all of twenty-four, right? What do you think? Supervisor Jeff.
Yes, it's being paid by a grant.
All right.
Yep.
You had a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty-seven, two, right, Jeff.
Resolution to introduce county local law J.
J.
J of 2023, local law under county law section one five one one and one five one three, providing for the organizational meeting and selection of chair of the board of supervisors honor before the eighth day of January in each even numbered year, and establishing a two-year term for the chair of the, of the board of supervisors.
Or? Second? Any discussion?
So just so that people understand, if I read this right, in 2024, we, you folks will be electing a chairman, and he'll be serving for two years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Chair person, I should say.
Mr. Chairman, would the intent also be, like, if he, once he or she, once the chairman of the board, he or she would also set those committees, and they would tend to stay, those committees, et cetera?
Yes, for two years? Yeah, that's the intent, hopefully. Keeps more consistency, you know? Seems like when you get things going, then the committee could change, so, I think it just had...
You just start learning the position in that.
Right, absolutely. That's the intent, you know, the philosophy to that.
Anybody concerned about, uh, putting, thinking about sort of restructuring, I had company terms, chairman, concerned? In secondary terms?
Not that he didn't elect a public to serve on the regular board. I'm sorry, not that they keep getting elected by the general public to serve on the regular board, I think that the term limits for all politicians, just, you know, in general, right? You know, as long as the general public keeps electing people, time after time, after time, I don't know, the regular board should be, or, there's a problem.
It's a good question, I think.
No problem.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty-eight, supervisor part two.
Senate County Supervisors, formally support upcoming Senate President applications in near state homes and community rental, should county certified rural reservation home.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number twenty-nine, supervisor Jeff.
Supervisors, great point, members to the Big L A State Park Airport Advisory Committee.
Support. Should I get it? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number thirty, supervisor Jeff.
Senate County Schools in promotion and development, funds approved, ready to live in our festival.
Or? Should I get it? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Thirty-one, supervisor part two.
For supervisors appoints Seth Purcher of Senate County Attorney Board.
Or? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Here. Number thirty-two, supervisor Jeff.
For supervisors supports development and operation of schools and promotion in visitor center at seventeen fifteen, near state group three eighteen, and sound type.
Or? Second?
Chairman, do you have some changes? I think everybody got a, a handout, but there was a few things changed on to it. Basically, it's the follow the same, except just after my conversations with the law supervisors, after last meeting, we attempted to deal with a lot of the TPA money portion and not our portion. We could have got our portion, by the time we had the funds for weed harvesting, the free bears in the lakes, where we made our money, and then we wouldn't be able to get money, but we just did to be able to winter fast and the other stuff, and our birds and everything. This basically changed it to the allocation for the support of visitor center would be for, from the TPA money and not on top of the TPA.
You're up ahead of motion, right?
Definitely.
You have a second? Or a second on that?
Mr. Chairman, just a one more, is that just handout thirty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
Second on the amendment, discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, the original, uh, my question is, and the original proposal was to negotiate with the chamber. Is that, eliminate that negotiation?
The, the, the resolution was drafted to authorize the county manager to negotiate a lease agreement. It is not the, this is not the final approval of the lease agreement. So if there is one developed with these parameters, then it would come back to the board for final approval.
Basically, we are, we're studying the parameters meanwhile, if the county managers are authorized, so we negotiate that, and that comes back to us.
Right, there's obviously other terms other than just money and time. It's the nature of the visitor center, the support operation that's spelled out in it. So there are additional terms of an actual lease. So this is just essentially, this is again authorization for the committee, or for the county manager, to enter into lease negotiations with these parameters.
So, okay, is that, is the... Is the operative addition or phrase, page two, line fifty, and not just taken as deleted, is that...
Say again? Actually, I can't, I'm not sure.
No, I can't see it here.
I know, we're discussing the lighting.
I'm ahead to the left.
Right, that's the, the operative change.
It's not working, Bob.
But hey, the operative change is proposed is the, and not, which is in line fifteen on the last page. And then it also, because there were questions raised, this was to clarify that this vote is not subject to the two-thirds. That would be at a later date, once there is a lease negotiation.
Thank you.
Actually, my question is, I answered between all of them. My question is, whether this was a lease, or whether we were negotiating, or what the, what the plan was for this. So, but when this comes back, Mr. Chairman, when this comes back with, if we agree, that is a two-thirds vote?
That's correct. Because you're gonna be, it was, as we adopted the other law earlier, adopted the earlier law requiring a super majority vote for leases in excess of five years.
So that was a confusion as to why this was not, but now...
So, just to clarify further, so the two-thirds vote, let me back up. Whatever the county manager negotiates with the chamber and brings back to us, that will require a two-thirds vote?
That's correct.
Thank you. Got you.
Supervisor, listen.
I have a couple weeks ago for a sketch or a drawing of this. Well, I think we should, we should see what the plan is.
Is that designed yet? It's not designed yet.
Well, they want to...
They don't have the money to, to build it.
Well, they had, well, they have some idea of all the, all the bidding. Is it where the house is made up, or is it more like it is? Well, we, we did meet with Jay Burger individually, I think I was with Chairman Enslow, and they had a perfect presentation where they, they laid out their, their idea of visitor center, what it is like and stuff like that. So I kind of know what their plan is. We have, apart from a lot of areas, they want to have the, you know, four hundreds.